Huh?
No, just recording, it's a business meeting.
Well, it's gonna be recorded on the video.
On the video.
You had something profound you wanted to say?
We have no public here, ain't should get going.
I'm gonna sit closer.
Yeah, I was gonna say you.
She's right, she's good.
Monica? Ready? Okay.
Call and order. Fledge allegiance, please.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is the Township of Hillsboro Planning Board Public Business Meeting dated February 25th, 2016. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Here.
Mr. Julian? Mr. Conard? Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hestag?
Here.
Ms. Becarina?
Here.
Ms. Forrest?
Here.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Here.
Mayor Delkor?
Here.
Chairman Lepani?
Here. Next order of business is disposition of minutes. The first one dated January 7th, 2016. It would be the minutes for the reorg meeting.
All members present may vote.
Okay, thank you. Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Ms. Becarina?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Here.
Mayor Delkor?
Come on, our pilot.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Chairman Lepani?
It's like ram hog day, I'm reeling in the moment.
Do we need a minute? Okay, thank you. Next order of business would be the regular meeting minutes from that same date, January 7th, 2016.
All members eligible, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. There's one minor edit I'd like to bring to the board's attention. Under Planning Board Business, second bullet says Glengarry Extension of Time through, I should say, 2/29/16, not 3/31/16.
So approve the minutes as stated. Roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Ms. Becarina?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Chairman Lepani?
Yes. Thank you. And the last one would be minutes dated February 4th of 2016.
All members present may vote, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Just a slight explanation following up on the last change. Glengarry was extended to 3/31/16 at the February 4th meeting, just clarification.
Right.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Ms. Becarina?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Chairman Lepani?
Yes. All right, we have two resolutions on the agenda for this evening. First would be Valley Holdings LLC File 15 PB, 15 SRV, Major Site Plan Approval, Bulk Variances and Waivers.
Chairman, the eligible members to vote are yourself, Dr. Maruli, the mayor, Mr. Wagner, and Mr. Peason.
Just make it. Okay. Do we have any motion?
Make a motion, we move 15 PB dash 15 dash SRV.
Second.
Okay. Call a vote?
Chairman Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Thank you. Second one is the Planet Earth Biodiesel LLC File 15 PB 17 MRV, Plenary Final Minor Subdivision Approval and Variances for Planet Earth Biodiesel.
All members present this evening, Mr. Chairman, are eligible except Ms. Becarina and Ms. Forrest.
Okay, we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Right side of the table, going hard today. All right, thank you. And roll call.
Chairman Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor? All right, so next order of agenda is a presentation of the 2016 Capital Budget Proposal, Presentation by the Capital Planning Committee for Prioritized Proposals. In your packet, you should have a summary of the top projects listed. And I believe they broke it down to a Table 1 and Table 2. And I'm sure it will be a description from the... Chairman?
Good evening. My name is Tom Cellilli, and I appear before you this evening as Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. Also present with me is...
John Klepich.
Gentlemen, you want to spell your names for the record, just so we have it?
John Klepich is K-L-E-P-I-C-H.
Thank you.
Cellilli is C-E-L-L-I-L-L-I.
Thank you, gentlemen. Go ahead.
I also have other committee members that are here with us for moral support. Rob Peason, who's on the DS. Steve Monty, present, and Frank Herbert, who's our secretary.
Chairman, can you move the mic just a little closer so that the people out in the television audience can hear you?
Okay. Is that better?
Perfect. Thank you.
Our committee was tasked with ranking 25 projects by considering each proposal and prioritizing each request for today's presentation to your board. Let me take a few minutes and provide your board with an overview of the process we employ to complete our task. Our reorganization meeting on January 21st began our process. Committeeman Greg Burchett administered the oath of office to all members present. Our next step was to select a chairman and a secretary. At this point, we begin to hear proposals from the following departments and presenters. Office of Emergency Management, John Sheridan, Director. Hillsborough Rescue Squad, David Gwynn, Chief. Parks and Recreation Department, Bob Wagner, Director. John Crossen, Assistant Park Supervisor. Engineering Department, Tom Ballanger, or Ballinger, excuse me, Assistant Township Engineer. Department of Public Works, Rich Recivee, Director. And Police Department, Lieutenant Kenneth Pryor, Administrative Division Commander. Each department presentation was both professional and very informative. The committee used this opportunity to question each presenter on certain aspects of their proposals. In most instances, the answers were communicated that evening, but some presenters were requested to develop further information, which was subsequently provided to our committee in an extremely timely manner. All committee members were then asked to consider the department presentations over the following week. Committee members were also encouraged to visit the site of some of the projects where possible. This was especially applicable to those projects submitted by the Engineering and Parks and Recreation Departments, which involve projects depicted as having deteriorating conditions. Using the old adage that a picture's worth a thousand words, viewing the site would allow us a better priority ranking to be assigned to that project. On February 8th, the committee reconvened for the purpose of discussion and ranking of the projects under consideration. The first order of business involved categorizing each project into one of three levels based on all of the information available to our committee. Those three categories were high priority projects, which we categorized as must-have completed, medium priority projects, which we categorized as should-have completed, and low-level priority projects, which we categorized as nice-to-have completed if the funds are available. The next order of business was to go back to each priority level, beginning with the high priority category, and rank each project using the following guidelines. Projects involving public safety were given the highest priority. Projects involving state or other funding sources that would be lost if not approved were also given the highest priority. Projects having wide public benefit also received higher priority rankings. And finally, projects promising significant labor or other efficiencies were also viewed favorably. As we reviewed the project proposals, our own selection criteria and field observations, it became apparent to the committee that our public roads are in need of some immediate repair. With the increase in population and resulting traffic over the last several years, our township roadway system was in danger of falling behind the curve with respect to maintenance and repair. For this reason, the committee decided to rank the road projects separately. The committee felt that this was proper to ensure that funds were also available for much non, or much-needed non-road project requests. After much deliberation and discussion, all 25 projects were ranked, and a spreadsheet identifying those rankings had been furnished to your board for review and discussion. At this time, we can go over our rankings and answer any questions the board may have with respect to our committee recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may. We might note there are certain department heads in attendance tonight, sitting way in the back. So if there are any specific questions, I suppose, for that department, they are here.
Okay, I noticed that, I don't need to wreck them, we see them. They're hiding, I think. All right. I understand, I looked at the, you know, just my own question, I noticed, we'll start with the road projects, Chairman. Do you ask Mr. Bound to go back and get some new numbers based on some changing costs?
Yes.
How confident is he that, obviously with the cost of the crude oil being as low as it is, and that's the most important part of asphalt, that if these road projects were to be done in a timely manner, that that would be a number that's realistic?
I think the reason that we asked for some additional numbers was twofold. Number one, it was brought up that the cost of a barrel of oil had dropped significantly in the last year or so. And during the presentation, it was determined that the initial projected numbers were based upon things that were done in 2015. So we asked him to go back and contact some of the municipalities in our area to see what the current rate for some of these things were. And it did result in a lesser estimate for the cost. But again, that's really a moot point, because nothing happens until we put it out to bid, so...
Sure.
Just a guideline for us. We broke down the road projects, there are five of them. We rated them all as highest priority. A couple of the projects, New Amwell Road, the Section 2, we thought there was a grant that might be coming along with that, so that was rated number one. And South Triangle Road was rated number three. Both of those were on our lists from the 2015 activities, so nothing had changed other than maybe a little bit more deterioration along the way, so we listed those number one and three. Euclid Avenue was a dilemma. I went out and personally visited that particular area. It's a remote residential street, there are only about 19 homes on that street. But one of the things that we learned during the course of the initial presentation is that there's a sewer project that's going to go in and rip up a good part of that street, and it'll have to be resurfaced. The budget proposal, or the project proposal here seeks to go in at that same time and repair or bring up to standard, same standard the rest of the street will be, a small portion of that street. It seems to be, or it seems to our committee, that it was a wise thing to do based on the economy and based on the fact that these people were going to be inconvenienced with the sewer project, and it seemed difficult to try to get them to go through it again, maybe next year or the year after by postponing this. So for that reason, we ranked that as number two. The Camp Lane Road project is number four, and the... I think that had been brought up before, that's a section between Sunnymead Road and Route 206. Heavily traveled, an area that gives access to the township of Mandville. So there's an awful lot of activity there, and for that reason, we thought it would be proper. The fifth area is Clausen Avenue, I personally visited that area also. Clausen Avenue, for those of you who are not familiar with it, is a road that runs between South Branch Road and River, River Road, Riverside Road, I believe it's called. It's a highly residential area, and we've understood from the presentation that they've had problems there in the past with runoff and things like that. What was impressive to me is that there were many, many side streets or tributaries off of that particular street, which would create a lot of residential traffic. So we thought that was appropriate. And that took care of the road projects, and again, we would hope that something can be done with all of those this year.
And one thing to note on the road projects, why you see New Amwell Road as number one is that it's eligible for possible local aid grant. And the reason that road was selected is that the state generally looks favorably upon streets that are what are called complete streets, that have a sidewalk, a bike lane, a median, et cetera, et cetera, that would be more likely to give a grant than if we just picked, you know, say, South Triangle Road, which may not have room for a bike lane. So that was the reason that went number one, is with the funds available from the state. But the roads are, we spent a lot of time on roads and calculating how many miles of road that we are responsible for maintaining as a municipality, and calculating the average life of a roadway or a roadbed, and that at the rate that we've been going in the past years, it would take us about 300 years to replace our roads. So that's what kind of prompted the group to put roads as a priority.
And that's going to be a big issue in the future, too, because it's just putting off, year after year, what is needed to be done, and unless we do something in the next three, four, or five years, we're going to have major problems in our roads, and it's going to cost a lot more.
There was also a suggestion to crack fill roads, you know, maintain roads, which presently, you know, we really don't see being done, and maybe extend the life of roadways that we have.
But even our developments, there's a lot of developments, even the, when you look at things like, and I live in Country Classics, some of the older sections of Country Classics are starting to really have problems, even though their, Country Classics is still quote "new", and there's other people in town that have, it's just the same, you know, the side roads are starting to really take a hit.
Well, the oldest part of Country Classics was built in the late 90s, so that puts it almost 25 years ago.
But it's still considered the new section.
It's still new construction, right?
Yes.
And on an anecdotal basis, that many of the committee members, we also wear hats as taxpayers and as motorists on the streets over there, and we also speculated and wondered about other streets that we're aware of in the township that are in similar need of repair. So it's something I think that needs to be considered and moved on.
Great, yeah, it's an issue that we tried to address in part last year. Some of the roads and some of the, taking a small piece of bonding out, but it's noted, it's, we got a lot of roads, and they're costly to repair, so there's got to be a program to start soon to do the, to start doing road repairs.
Absolutely.
It's inevitable.
And this may be the next year, year and a half may be an ideal time to start thinking about that with the oil prices being low, because if they jack up to $60, $70 a barrel versus the 30s today, we'll never be able to afford it.
I got a question, and it might be better for Tom, and I don't know if you guys can answer, I'm just curious, Tom, as to the likelihood of the grant?
Yeah, just for the record.
Has it been applied yet?
Have you applied for it? Yeah, I think so, I just want him to put on record.
Yes, spell his last name.
Okay, no, the grant, this is Phase 2 of New Amwell, where we received Phase 1, which is the first section of Amwell. And just so you know, I broke it into three sections, because typically, the local aid will give you $150,000 a year, typically, which we've been getting lately. So each section of these roads, as you know, New Amwell Road is a large road. So it's, this section alone is $450,000 approximately. So I broke it into three sections, so we can at least get $350,000. If I did it in one big section, they would just give you a flat $150. So we did receive the grant last year to do the first section. When you do a phased road, the chances of getting this is very good. I think we will get it.
Okay.
And we should be notified. Typically, that grant went in around November of last year, and typically, they let you know sometime in April, May. So we should find out. I think it's very likely we'll get it.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to question, the section you described here, 1750 feet between Taurus Drive and New Amwell Road, is that a misprint?
Yeah, that's a misprint, it's supposed to be Autton Road.
Autton Road. I was saying.
Yeah, because Phase 1 was Route 206 to Taurus, this is Taurus to Autton. And then the Phase 3 would be Autton to... And as you know, the first section was, if you know New Amwell Road, it's very wide up there, and then it gets a little narrower, so the cost, Phase 3, I'll be putting in Phase 3 next year, and that will be, we kind of broke it up that they're all about $500,000 apiece, 450, 500.
Okay.
Yeah, hi, I just have a question. I'm just wondering, is there any kind of statistics or reports, or what exists to give you confidence that these are the highest priority roads in the town? Would there be others that pop up that we use, say, oh, we should have fixed that road?
Well, it's very difficult. We sat down, myself, I sat down with the Public Works Department, and we sat down last year, actually, and we tried to prioritize roads. I actually have a map here that, of all the roads in town, we sat and prioritized it. Now, it is very difficult, because sometimes with the winters we've been having, you know, roads do change, so we do go out and look at it, but these were roads that have been on the list. There are other roads that are probably close to similar to these. One of them is Beekman Lane, right out front here, that I watch it disintegrate in front of my eyes, you know? So that's on my five-year plan, it's on the five-year plan. But we're looking at it again, I think, once we sit down with the Township Committee. I mean, if we're looking at roads, if one seems to be deteriorating faster than others, it's just difficult, because, you know, depending on traffic and the wear and tear, we will look at that. And I think in the past, we did make some adjustments with the Township Committee of which roads we would do.
Thank you.
But this, these have been on, these have been on the list for a while, and a lot of times, you know, I get inquiries from residents and so forth of, you know, which roads we're going to pave. So if I put something on a list, I'd like to, you know, if it's deteriorated to the point, and I think the committee went out and looked at a lot of these roads and kind of agreed that they're in, they're in need of work. If we let them go any further, we're going to eat into the base pavement, and we're going to have, spend a lot more money down the road. The whole idea is you kind of catch these roads to redo the surface course first before you deteriorate that subgrade in the base material, because once you destroy that base material, then your cost, then you're rebuilding the entire road. The whole idea is, this is basically, you're milling off the surface layer, and you're putting a new coat of pavement on it. And you can make that road last another 15, 20 years.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Any further questions on the roads, we can move on to the non-road projects?
I think we're good, thank you.
Okay, our number one priority there was replacing some aging defibrillators. Easy for you to say, huh? Through the police department, or for the police department, these are a couple that are required for replacement, and it's a public safety problem, and that's why it was rated as number one. Not a huge expenditure, but it's something that has to be done. Moving along, the municipal playground renovation. That's the playground right outside of this building over here. During our presentation, we've heard, or we learned, that it's the most active playground of any of the ones that we have in the township. And if you've had an opportunity to take a look at it, it is looking really weathered about this time, and it's starting to present maybe a safety hazard for the many kids who take advantage of it. So we thought we'd move that up to number two. Number three, it's the ADA Accessible Playground at Anne Van Millsworth Park. This is relative, I guess it may be our newest park in the township, and we still have not gotten final ADA approval for work that needs to be done in that particular area. So that's one of regulatory problems that we need to address, and that's the reason that we moved that up to number three on our list. The next one was from the Public Works Department, the tractor with the road mower attachment, and... If a committee member can help me out on that one, I'm drawing a blank on...
That's a mower that mows the right-of-ways along the...
Okay.
And has an arm that comes down on the other side of the guardrails and such. And the one that they're using presently, you need to be kind of an expert to use the whip and chair to get that thing to work. It's, I think, Rich said it was about 30 years old, the contraption that they use now, and they sorely is in need of replacement, and that a new one will be more efficient and get the job done faster. A lot of the Public Works presentation revolved around saving and labor, in which case, the costs would benefit the capital outlay against the savings in labor time in repairs, in maintenance, in use, and so forth. So that's the mower that'll take care of the roadways.
This will be replacing a current mower that they have, a 1988 variety, which the state is unreliable and in need of replacement, so I think it's...
Falling apart.
We like to call them vintage.
Vintage. I can relate to that remark, Mr. Mayor.
And it is a heavily-used piece, I mean, just look at all the roadways we have in the town, and they need to be cut back, otherwise you have fire hazards and things of that nature.
Okay, the fifth rated one was the AVM Skate Park, replaced some wooden ramps. Again, that was a public safety issue, something that needs to be addressed. It also raises liability questions for the township. Not that we don't have enough for the skate park to begin with, but these are additional liability problems that come about.
Again, a heavily-used area that a lot of people use, and we want to make sure... Again, a heavily used area that a lot of people use and we want to make sure it's safe for the kids.
The sixth one categorized is the Large Plan Document Copy Machine, a replacement through the Engineering Department. They recommended this. As I understand it, this is not only used by the Engineering Department, but many other, other departments within the township area. And I guess the quality is, is such that it's time for replacement. So based on the number of users of that particular machine, we thought it appropriate to move it up near the top of our list.
It's the only large format document printer that is in the building and there's no alternate than to go out to Staples or something to get copies. And as, as Tom had mentioned, it's used by not just engineering, but other departments as well.
This has to be of the town.
Yeah. Need for maps.
Do you bill for those? Bill when you make copies for people? Do you, do you charge for that?
Yeah, in, in most cases.
Okay. So it generates income?
Okay, the, the seventh item is a three-quarter ton pickup truck. Actually, the Public Works Department had requested two of those. We split that request in half and put one as a high priority and then one as a lower priority based on the costs that were involved. And so you'll see that again appear as item number seventeen on the list. We certainly don't question the need for that replacement, but it'll be replacing a nineteen ninety-five Ford one fifty with a hundred and seventy-two thousand miles. So great American product. And a two thousand and one Dodge three-quarter ton pickup with a hundred and forty-eight thousand miles. So I would think that would be in order. The next area would be the item number eight, a PortaCount Pro Plus Respirator Fit Tester. And that was the Rescue Squad that had made that particular request. It's a device which can be quantitatively fit to test all types of respirators. The device will be kept at the Rescue Squad Station. An EMS and police personnel are required to be fit tested on an annual basis. So again, we, we feel this goes back to items of public safety and being shared by a couple of departments in this particular case. For that reason, we gave it that higher priority. The ninth item is the F-350 Dump Truck with Plow. That's another Public Works request.
Public Works needs trucks.
Got, got trucks.
With plow?
Yeah, just like the roads. I mean, the, the last two years have, you know, really taken their tolls on the vehicles too. And our guys do a great job of keeping them maintained, but at some point, with the amount of work, especially the plows that have needed to be used over the last several years, it's really exacerbated there.
I believe Rich was relating that his people spend a lot of time doing repairs as opposed to other maybe equally or more important items. This is to replace a two thousand and one Ford F-350 Mason Dump Truck that has ninety-six thousand miles on it. So we're certainly getting our, our money's worth out of the equipment that we have. Item number ten is requested by the Office of Emergency Management and that's to replace all the locks and do some security upgrades on the municipal complex. A sizable expenditure. It was related to us that during a drill of some type just recently, there were instances where because of people coming and going over the years, rooms were inaccessible as a result of this particular drill, trying to get into that. So they thought this would be a, a remedy. The committee agreed with it by, although not calling it a high priority, a, a mid-level priority project, that would be the first one we, we took a look at and we've ranked that as the number ten area. And if anybody has anything else to add to that.
It's a security issue. If you have a lockdown procedure in the building, you may not be able to get into certain rooms.
Because the alternative to just replace locks, that would be always as expensive if you go this way. Whereas now, there's no master key for most of them.
And again, we view this as another safety factor with all of the terrorist activities that are going around. You, you never know when it's gonna be in your backyard. So this seems like a, a wise decision to move forward on.
John, anything you want to add?
I'm not sharing it, sorry.
Come on up.
I mean, it serves multiple purposes. The current system that we have is a combination of the electronic locks...
Use the microphone, somebody.
We can hear you, but they can't.
The, the current system that we have is a combination of electronic locks and key locks. Over the years, people have changed out the key locks to suit their own purposes for their departments. What we found during one of our drills here was that we can't access some of those because the locks were changed. There is no master key for every door in the building. So that, that created an issue for us. Some of the problems that we also saw were some of the locks are in need of repair. And what this system would allow us to do is it'd be, it'd be administered by the Police Department and everybody would be issued a card. Depending on which department you're in, it'll give you access to that department, to all the doors in that department. If you leave the appointment at Hillsborough Township, we don't have to replace the, if you don't turn your key in, the problem that we have right now is that you still have a key to get into that department, which could cause a problem. With this system, we just shut off that key and you no longer have access. It also gives us the ability to, if we have visitors coming in to use different parts of the building, we can give them a key with time restrictions on it and it'll open the doors for them when they need to be here, it'll shut off at a certain time. It basically brings up, brings us up to the modern times with the, the key lock systems.
Kind of like a hotel room.
Yeah, similar. And, and it also records who is going into what areas at what time. So if we ever have something occur within the building, we know who was in that part of the building at that time.
Or what card was in the building.
What card, yes.
Right.
It's a starting point.
Right. Have you ever considered video monitoring along with a system like that?
We do have, we do have some video monitoring in parts of the building, but not in the entire building.
Okay. Thanks, John. Thanks, John.
Okay, the next two areas kind of go hand in hand. Items number eleven and twelve on your listing, replacing old damaged wood guardrails at various locations throughout the township and also various sidewalk replacements throughout the Again, it, it's a public safety, it's a liability factor on our roadways and appears that it's a very worthwhile, I guess it's a regular maintenance that they go through. So it's money that's being allocated on a, on a annual, year-by-year basis in order to make those repairs. Again, going back to what we were talking about with the roads, we need to keep up with all of the activities as we go through with the aging of our, our township roadways and facilities, the same as we do with our own bodies as they go through the aging process.
So this is one actually that I thought might be a little higher on the list. And maybe I, I was gonna ask Tom to maybe come back up because this is one I want everyone to understand sort of where we are with the guardrails.
Okay.
Yeah, with the wooden guide rails, we have various roads in town here with the old-style wood guide rails.
Hold the mic a little closer, please.
Hold it closer.
Yeah, we have, you know, various roads with these old wooden guide rails that are not even legal anymore. They don't, you know, they don't meet any kind of standards or codes or, or anything. So we're trying to replace them. And I have, we measured, we have over almost six thousand feet of old wood guide rail and replacing guide rails is approximately a hundred hours a foot is the standard estimate. So we have, you know, almost six hundred thousand dollars with the guide rail we have to replace in this township through, through the years. So last year, I believe they funded a hundred thousand dollars. I'm trying to get at least a hundred thousand dollars a year funded so we could replace some of this guide rail, not do it all one year, but at least in yearly sections. And we'll pick the worst first and go from there.
Are you replacing it with metal?
Replace it with metal. Yeah, because wood guide rail, I mean, the only, the standard for wood guide rail is, you know, if it's in a park or something, speeds are down below fifteen miles an hour. As soon as you get up to twenty-five miles an hour or more, wood guide rail doesn't meet any standard. And we have some of the roads, I don't know if you drive around town, especially on Black Point Road, we have some of these old guide rails and there's drop-offs and we have to replace them. It's a safety, so I think like you were saying, that probably should be high on the list because it is a public safety issue.
Are you doing ballast as well or just the rail itself? The post in the ground?
Some of them, we have to replace the post.
Are they wooden or are they, are they metal that's in the ground now?
Some, some are wood, some of the old wood. Some are metal that are in there and we can just replace the rails if we can get a retrofit. Some of them, you have to drive all new posts in.
All new posts, right.
Yeah. And, and they're not cheap because every time you come to a certain, like an intersection, there's, has to be these breakaway posts that go on. So if a car hits the end of the guide rail, they have these posts that break away to, for safety and so forth, and, and they're very expensive. So when I did a cost estimate, you know, that basically brings, you know, between the rails and the breakaway ends, it's approximately about a hundred hours a foot to replace these.
Do we do that?
What's that?
Do our guys do it?
No, we would have to either sub it out or we can work with the county. Somerset County does some guide rail for us. We can contract with the county and get a better cost on it. We funded, last year you funded a hundred thousand. We haven't replaced any yet. We plan on doing it this year. And we're hoping if we can get another hundred thousand to, to kind of work on some of these really bad roads.
Tom?
Yeah, and the sidewalk, every year, I don't know if you're aware, but every year I do go around and replace damaged sidewalks, heaved sidewalks and so forth. Most of this money, the seventy-five thousand I asked, most of it is funded through the developer's contribution. So we still have money in that account, I believe, that this, we can use towards that. And it's been working out very well because I could repair a lot of sidewalks and I don't replace entire, you know, I, I, we actually go around, we mark pieces of sidewalk to try to save money. So we'll do a piece here, a piece there, and we're, we're trying to stretch the money as far as we can go. And we, we go into developments. I get from the Public Works Department, they're getting constant complaints for replacements. They do go around, some of the residents will see that if, is it a, a major tripping hazard, emergency, the Public Works will go in there and put some temporary blacktop just to eliminate the trip hazard, but then we'll go behind them and actually replace the sections of sidewalk.
I just might like to add, as far as the sidewalk fund goes, I had asked Nancy Costa back in January what the balance was. And as of January, there was about fifty thousand dollars left in that fund for sidewalks.
So the rest they'd have to fund through capital?
So net twenty-five roughly.
Tom, just a question again about the guide rails. When you retrofit, do those posts meet the same safety standards as a new post?
That's what we have to look at. Most of the time, you have to replace the post, you know. There's some, there's some of them, I, I think Black Point Road might have some metal posts in there and we have to see if they can utilize the same post. But typically, you gotta replace the post, rails, everything.
Yeah, you would think that retrofit would probably...
To meet everything to a new standard.
Wouldn't meet the same standard, right.
But the hundred bucks a foot assumes you're replacing the posts?
Yes. Yeah, that's basically replacing the post, putting the new breakaway end pieces on, yeah. And again, I mean, we will work with, if, you know, if it's funded, you know, I'll work with the county. I, I believe the county we can go through. We even joined the Morris County Co-op. We can work through them and get prices, see who works out, you know, the, the best cost for us.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
And just as a further comment or a final comment on the, on the ranking process, if you look at items one through five under the road projects and items one through nine on the non-road projects, the committee rated all of those as high priority. The first mid-level priority was the lock security updates for the complex and then the damaged wood guardrails and sidewalk replacements. So it's, it was pretty high up on our list, but the committee felt that it was a mid as opposed to high priority level activity. The next couple come from the Parks and Rec Department. The first one is a tilt trailer. This is number thirteen on the list. Tilt trailer that's used to haul new mower purchased in two thousand and fifteen. It would be better meet the department's needs for hauling various equipment around, travel to various parks in one day, and lifting of the ramps on the trailer we use now takes a toll on the operator even with a ramp assist in place. The new tilt trailer would be safer and benefit the department, was the request of Parks and Recreation. The next item, item number fourteen, is a two thousand and sixteen Mason Dump Truck.
Note, that's a Parks and Rec item, not DPW.
That's correct.
Right. And this is a Ford F-350 Dump Truck with snow plow. The request mentioned that there's a Department of Eight Employees and one employee is not assigned a truck. Truck is needed so that they can be more efficient in completing everyday tasks. So here, we're talking about an efficiency gain and for that reason, we listed it as number thirteen, number fourteen. The next item, number fifteen, is a Toro Infield Pro and that's basically used by Parks and Recreation to service the ballfields in the township on a regular basis. A machine used to groom all ballfields in town and it was requested as a, again, a time saver and a, a piece of equipment that's more up-to-date with the latest technology. Item number sixteen is a compact, high-density record storage system requested by the, the And this is a high-density storage system for records that uses a rolling system to move storage, shelving, holding files and maximize limited space. Police Department is required by law to keep certain records for extended periods of time and other records must be kept indefinitely. Their archives room has reached full capacity with approximately thirty individual filing cabinets. Due to the sensitivity of these files, they cannot be stored outside the Police Department and this would give them additional room for... And this would give them additional room for storage and a more compact, as the name implies, storage system than presently is in place.
Is there an issue as far as storage room and as maximum as we are, is that we are at a point where something has to be done? Or are we, a couple of years, I mean, you have this listed pretty low, so I'm assuming that...
It can be done next year.
It can be done next year.
But it's something that we're going to have to eventually have. It's, otherwise, you're gonna have to build another building somewhere.
That's more expensive.
So, this is for paper records?
Paper records, yes.
Physical.
You know, it's like a closet and you just roll it together. And so, you have 20 cabinets or whatever, rolling back and forth so that you can get the records fast, too.
If this, if we're at, say, right now utilizing 700 square feet of space, this will reduce it to what? I mean, what, and how much room does that leave us for growth? I don't know.
Lieutenant Pryor, you want?
Pardon?
Lieutenant Pryor's here if he wants to comment.
Not to get too technical, but what do we save in space? Gotta give everybody a chance to speak.
I don't know if I was ready to answer square footage questions. Let me see if I have something in reference to that. Basically, right now, and I'm not gonna say it's, it's more of a higher priority than they put it on their list. Absolutely, you have a lot of stuff here that's very important. The Police Department's 25 years old. We're pretty close to where we're, we're maxed out on space. This is gonna maximize the space if we get that and give us more room in the future. A lot of records we have to keep, we can't get rid of them for 95 years. Some we have to keep forever, and that's the purpose of this. Right now, like I said before, that you said it was approximately 30 storage cabinets that we have jammed in there. The square footage of this will go to 7,560, I guess it's linear feet, LFI. I'm not a, familiar with that term. But it's gonna give us a lot of extra space and for the future, and that's the purpose of it. I think it could be held off for a year, two, maybe three. We can make stuff work. We, we thought about maybe cutting holes underneath stairwells to make extra closets. I don't wanna really go there. Hopefully, we can come to some decision before that, but we're not cutting any holes yet, just to let you know.
Okay.
Just curious, what, what records do you, are indefinite? I'm just curious.
Expungements, homicides, arrest records are like 90 years, 95 years. There's various other things that we have to keep as far as memos, a lot of other government regulations that we can't get rid of. We do purge stuff every year. The purge stuff is all different spots. We can't keep it really in one spot, so we have to try to pull from 13, 14 different filing cabinets, try to get it all together and remove it. With this system, we basically put everything that needs to get purged in, say, 2020 in one spot. Then when 2020 comes, we're gonna move it all out instead of trying to collect it all over the place. It would really organize stuff and give us a lot more space. Like I said, this is the first time we've presented it to the committee and it could definitely be put on the back burner for another year or two.
So, paperless society still requires paper to be kept?
Is that what you're saying? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And as a note, the Police Department does pursue grants and have been doing a great job from, from their presentation at our committee level and they should be commended for that.
Thank you.
And you might think it would be cheaper to scan documents or certainly to, to save space. The cost, firsthand, I found out the first, the cost of scanning documents is, it's amazing. It's so expensive.
But it's still required by pa, they still require...
By law, you still have to have the paper, yeah, so.
That kill trees.
Okay, moving on. Item number 17, I've previously addressed. That was when we split the two trucks. And the last three, the automated salt brine maker, Woodfield Park Wellness and Fitness Trail and Lucas Chess Compression System, which is relatively new technology. We all classified in, in the areas that certainly, you know, we should be doing something about it, but a question is whether or not there's funding to, to be able to go in that particular area. And that concludes our list.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Okay, if there are no further questions, let me just make a closing comment and...
Well, let me ask first, is any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
Let me close by thanking the Township Planning Board and the Township Committee for giving us the opportunity to participate in this capital project approval process. It's my hope that our efforts will allow both the Planning Board and Township Committee to render sound decisions with respect to capital spending plans for 2016. And we remain available to your committee should the need arise during the remainder of the fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thanks for your work, guys. Thank you to all of you and those in, sitting, Steve.
All right, so before you have the description from the, and the recommendation from the Budget Planning Committee, it's obviously by no means set in stone and is your opportunity, if you feel there's something that should be moved on this list, up or down, to make recommendations, we can do that before we submit it to the Township Committee. Even then, at that point, it's not set in stone, they can do it themselves. So, this is just our opportunity to put our thoughts and footprint on this if you feel. I'll open up to the, the committee for any other thoughts or...
Just, just one, I kinda noted it earlier. To me, the way that the, the project should be evaluated is high priority needs to always be placed on public safety. I know there's other things that we always have to look at, but that was why we've started the process of working on the guardrails. My recommendation would be we, we elevate that from a priority standpoint. There's other, there's, some of the projects, there's things that we can, we can do in the interim to, to work around. We can work around the, the guardrails. That's, that's a safety issue, I think that's got to get escalated.
Seems like we made the commitment to start it. And then to not, you know, sustain that commitment doesn't make, make sense. We're looking at several years to replace them all.
So, you would move that up into the priority class, which would put it up in the top 10? Non-road projects?
Top nine.
Top nine?
Top nine.
So, we would have to drop something down. This is the hard part, you know? Who do you pick out?
I mean, I think the easy part is where to move this one up to, to me, would be sitting at second or third on this list. Because, you know, because I, you know, echoing the mayor's comments, you know, about public safety, I mean, that's paramount. Can't shut the roads down. People are gonna be traveling on them no matter what. And not to get myself in trouble, but I see at least one thing in this top nine that could get shut down if it really became a severe safety issue. But I'm not gonna touch that one right now. But that's kind of where my thought process is, is, you know, if it's safety and something that we can't avoid having the public, you know, have access to it. Versus another where, area that you could restrict access, you know, if it becomes that significant concern.
Okay.
How's that for a non-answer?
Non-answer.
Or for, or for walking around the...
Any other thoughts? The other thought I had was speaking, and again, it's a hard decision and the costs is kind of a little prohibitive, but kind of concerning about the locks, the missile building, with the fact that if there's an emergency, you can't get into some buildings. And you have employees that still have keys possibly to get in or out because they've been changed. And I'm not sure, you know, it is a, it's not a cheap project, but it is, again, a public safety issue. You have the library here, which is a bunch of kids in and after-school projects and that. And if something should happen, God forbid that we aren't able to secure this building. Might be something to think about, moving up a little bit higher. But other than that, I think the list for myself is, I think, really good. Being on this committee in the past, it's, it's a tough choice because you'd like to have, be able to do everything. And that would be the only other thing that I thought might move up if, if possible, if there's some grant money that could be applied to that or whatever, I don't know, but... Or put it on a two-year plan or something to that effect.
Well, Mr. Chairman, part of the influence that we took into consideration also is the cost of these items. And for example, number two, the municipal playground, to replace that whole playground would be in excess of 300,000. The proposal was to remedy some of the issues on what's known as Castle Park. Much of Castle Park has pressure-treated wood, which, you know, is, and it's splintering. The 75,000 figure was to make it safe, at least, and make it, again, we, we consider that a safety issue. You know, when the young people of town get hurt on that. It is, it's a very hard decision to make where to prioritize these. And, you know, perhaps the, you know, the wooden guardrails maybe are thought as a little more of a static issue. However, it could be a tragic issue. So, you know, in, in retrospect, maybe that should be bumped up. But yes, pretty much with, with the exception of a handful, they're, they're all high priority items. And it was very difficult as we were going through, and you guys remember, we were like, okay, that's a high priority. Oh, that's a high priority. Oh, well, yeah, that's a high priority. And, you know, we're going through and say, well, we can't rank them all as high priority. So, you know, we managed to try to group them into the three categories and then reorder them in that order. And that's how it laid out in the result that you have in front of you. So, you know, that's, that's, the, the playground is, it's not just a playground, it is a safety issue. And many of these things are safety issues, you know, and going all the way through these, these items. So, maybe it is, makes sense to move the, the guardrails up. But where? That's, that's the question.
The cost of 10 and 11 displaces four through nine, distinct cost. It's a tough call.
Yeah, I guess, and we, we always appreciate the work you have put in. We know it's, you know, you're, you're trying to prioritize as, as you see fit. This, the guardrail is just one of my sort of pressure points that we've started that process. It is a safety, and there are things that could be tragic from, from not fixing that. That's why in my, from my perspective, it's one that I wanna continue the process. I'd like to see it continue to be funded and, and move it forward.
Mr. Mayor, we did, we did discuss that in some of the areas where the, the guardrails are unusable. There are Jersey barriers were put up as, as a measure, you know, to keep somebody from going into the river. And, you know, some of the discussion of if there was funding, there's maybe critical areas of guardrail to replace from the approval of last year's. And that, you know, this is ongoing and it, they, they don't have to all be done at the same time. You know, they can be done in sections unless there is an economy of scale to have a contractor come in and do everything at once for a, a lower price. But it is going to be done piecemeal from what we understand.
So, with, so I got a question, since Public Works isn't here. With regards to the two trucks, okay. I'm sure, you know, there's mechanical issues, engine, transmission, but from a real, from a purely physical standpoint, their frames and all that, have they really worn out to that part? Or was there any discussion about replacing the powertrains, I notice, to try to get some more life out of them?
We didn't discuss them like we did with the ambulances, if that's what you're saying. That didn't come up as, as an option. Obviously, to replace an entire ambulance is a much higher cost than replacing a Ford F-250. You know, the price of the pickup trucks, there's no place near the price of those ambulances. $35,000 a truck versus the ambulances for like several hundred thousands.
Yep.
Plus, you know, what's the chance of a pickup truck with 150,000 miles on it, if you could reuse it?
Well, I'm just looking to combine price of the two, we're sitting at 91. You know, we're looking to try to move up, you know, the guardrails. You know, you might be able to at least pay for part of that cost if, depending if a powertrain replacement is a significant cost savings.
That might be a good question for Mr. Burchette, who's not here.
Who, I, you know, I wasn't gonna advertise his business, but I see it scrolling across.
Motor replacement's roughly about $5,000.
And that's why I was curious, is to see what exactly, you know, where the repairs were or the challenges they were having with those trucks, so.
We didn't go to the... Thank you. Okay, so we have a recommendation. So, it sounds pretty much like the, no one has any issues with the ranking of the road projects. So, it seems just the, the non-road projects that we have some, some discussion on. And with moving up the guardrails to, to a priority status, whether it be the top three or within the top nine, really, I guess at that point, really doesn't matter as long as it's in the top, top nine. And displacing, you know, one of those down. Or if you just wanna drop the whole list as-is, down one, just to make it easier. And just move it up into the, the top third.
Mr. Chairman, that would, that would be my recommendation, is we just elevate that and everything just goes down one more notch.
Okay.
Correct.
I think that'd be the easiest way to go. We'll elevate...
Mr. Chairman, what, so, just so we're clear, what's currently ranked number 11, the guardrails, would be moved to number two, three?
Two.
That would become number two and then everything below that would just?
Drop down one.
Drop it down.
Any other discussion comments? Anything from Parks? No, he was here, good?
No, we're good.
All right, so we'll accept a, a motion to approve the list as been modified?
So moved?
Second.
I don't think I'll look on this side of the room anymore.
This will, Mr. Chairman, this will be memorialized as part of an overall resolution. There is a draft, I believe, that's somewhat been circulated, but we'll memorialize it accordingly.
Very good, thank you. We need a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, vote.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Ms. Beccarini, Beccarina, sorry.
Yes.
Beccarina. Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, Sirachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Thanks to the committee for your work, yes.
Chairman Lapani?
I'll echo that sentiment and thank you and, yes.
Thanks, guys, because it does help filter this out for us. Now, the easy part is where to go find the money, right?
Yeah. Start printing it off. And thank you to the chairman heads who came in to lead, give us some information as needed. Thank you. All right, so we have... Thank you. So, the Planning Board Resolution recommending prioritize 2016 capital budget item to the Township Committee. We just finished. Any other business from the floor? Does it mean that there's no public? I see none. Consideration of ordinances? I don't believe, is there one or no, see any, right? David?
Excuse me?
No ordinances to consider, right?
None tonight, no.
Okay. All right, so at this point, we'll have a, a motion to close to go into executive session?
Can I just, before we jump into executive session, before we lose anybody, can we just discuss the schedule very quickly?
Sure.
In terms of what we need to hold on to or not. The next, following tonight, there is no agenda. There is no, I should say, no applications on, the agenda is forthcoming. There may be some resolutions to memorialize, but, so, first question, March 3rd is the next meeting. Do you wanna keep it or cancel it? Do you want to keep it or cancel it?
Do you feel that there'd be any kind of possibility of something that would come up?
I don't, well, some of that might, we might discuss in the executive session. Third, probably not.
By the tenth gives us a-
The tenth is empty. March twenty-fourth is the scheduled business meeting, but all three March meetings right now have empty agendas on them. There may be, there are some applications kicking around that haven't come into our office yet, so whether or not they'd make one of these meetings is questionable at this point.
Okay.
So if not the third, when would you do the resolutions on the?
It'd be the tenth.
The tenth would be the next one.
I don't think there's a big rush, because, I mean, we're just in the infancy of the budgets, so.
There, there is a resolution that we're hoping will be able to come before. That's the last application you heard, which was the ML Commons application, and the Cornerstone application is also out there.
Is there any issue if we do it the third or the tenth?
What, no, I, I think probably the tenth would make more sense, to leave and cancel the third.
Cancel the third, third meeting?
Need a motion.
We need a motion to cancel March third's meeting?
So moved.
Second. All right.
There you go, caffeine kicked in.
All in favor?
The website's-
All right, okay.
It says for the third.
So cancel the third.
The third is canceled, the next meeting will be March tenth. Thank you.
All right, so, okay, go make a break to close for executive session?
And your resolution, a motion to go into executive session pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B seven, attorney calling privilege, legal advice regarding Glenn Gary.
Okay, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. We'll call. All in favor? Aye. Okay, we'll go close for executive session.
Here, back there.
Go on the back.
Yeah, let's go on the back. Unless they got, did they put everything back on the table?
He should have something ready for you when you get home.
Okay, we're re-adjourned out of executive session.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to come out of executive session.
We need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that all members of the Planning Board present to commence with the executive session, are, are present to recommence with the open session, as well as the Director of Planning and the Board Attorney. The Board Attorney had a conversation with and gave advice to the board relative to an ongoing application, which is a potential litigation as well involving Glenn Gary. Direction was given to myself and to Mr. Maskey regarding to how to deal with the ongoing application. No formal action needs to be taken. Mr. Chairman, therefore, the appropriate motion is a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.